Okay, welcome everyone to our Monday, December 21st. Meeting of the common council, it's our caucus prior to our main council meeting. I will run through the agenda. So, starting off. We have the meeting minutes for Monday, December 7th, to offer for approval. Okay, then, moving on to. Local laws. Hell. Mr. Anani's request for agenda item number one for local law G, he had a request to move it. Which we will be doing.
So, yes, and I want to thank everyone who reached out to be co-sponsors. Again, if you want to be co-sponsors, don't hesitate to just reach out, to just raise your hand. Thank you so much.
This has never been discussed. In committee, has it?
It has, actually.
Hasn't it gone, yeah?
It was, when?
It has been discussing meetings before.
Oh. It hasn't been discussed in the planning committee this council.
It has been discussed in this planning committee, yes.
The, uh, Ms. Fay or, actually, Michelle might have a better recollection. Of it, I thought it had gone and passed out. If it has not, we're gonna have to hold on it until we get. Do you, I mean, Mr. Anani, you're the sponsor, so.
Yes, it has, we have discussed it, and you know, I'm.
Discussing, so it hasn't, it hasn't passed out of committee yet?
No, I think that's the point of, uh, yeah.
Right, right, okay, and so, yeah, he, the thing is, we're doing this now, having this discussion now, we did talk about this on Wednesday, he did.
Yeah.
He did say that.
Talking about saying that he wanted to make a motion to discharge.
Okay, so, we'll. So, you want to discharge with, for the purposes of passing it and moving.
Yes, that is correct.
You had a number of folks lined up as co-sponsors?
Yes, um, you know, I want to thank Jack, I want to thank Jenny, I want to thank Jemelle, I want to thank Joyce Love, um, all the people that reached out, so.
So, I want your input, yeah, well, I want your input, Richard, yeah, I was gonna ask.
Fine, I mean, I, hey, a motion to discharge does require, if it's being done tonight, unanimous vote, since it wasn't noticed at a prior meeting of the council. But, I mean, this creates this commission with, I forget how many members, where we can't even get other commissions appointed, and not clear how it's being funded, if it's being funded, and how it relates into our contract discussions that we're supposedly having right now with Spectrum.
Okay, so.
If anyone wants to pass it and dump it in the mayor's lap, I'm fine.
Yeah, that's what we're doing, thank you.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
Just members, by, show of hands, if you're comfortable moving forward, just, if not, it's one, two, there's only, there's, I can't hear you, Michael, if you want.
There is, uh. Jack, there's Derek, there's Jenny, there's other people, I'm not seeing hands, Sonia, there is.
This is about the internet, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well. I mean, it's the need right now, the times is calling, um, that it's, uh, equity is in being, um, on display throughout the city, when you look at the need right now for internet in people's homes, you know, we have a situation where we have a pandemic, and we have students that are in school, and, and other, and some parts of the city, you gotta have access to the free net, and that, that comes in as a, a bonus for a family that can't afford to have internet, and are faced with the option of, uh, virtual learning, so, um, the digital divide is real, and yes, the, the, the time calls for us to, um, put this in the mayor's lap, so I would be.
All right, well, this.
Not disagreeing with any of that, I'm not disagreeing.
Procedure wise.
Right, right, because.
But, dude, I'm fine.
Okay, but, so, here's what we'll do, we'll do is we'll release it, and, um, we'll.
I'm fine, pass it.
Have a discussion, yeah, but, the thing is, I mean, there's.
Kelly, he just said he's bypassing it, like, come on, let's move forward, not every.
It's a commission.
Everybody should be heard.
It's a commission, so it's gonna take some time to get up and running, so it's not like it's gonna pass, and then the commission's gonna be thrown together, and so what, what's the big deal with waiting, or working through it?
Hopefully, we'll get the living wage.
We could pass it throughout in our next meeting, so.
Can I ask a question? When, when we pass it, can we also ask for an update as to where we are with spectrum negotiations? I would assume the commission's gonna be interested in all of them.
Yes, we, we could ask that anyways.
We have a couple of members on it, too.
Yeah, so, uh, we'll release it, and.
Well, Mr. President, pro temp, I just want to go by procedural, because it didn't go to committee, Mr. Anani has to make a motion, did it go to committee?
Right.
To discharge.
It was referred to committee, but, did you discuss?
It's not, but if he's discharging it from, he has to have a motion, we have to.
Okay.
It has to be, uh, voted on unanimously, I believe, I don't know, yes, but.
I was so, how is it, why didn't, I mean, I know it was referred to committee, but, and you were gonna talk to administration about the issue, and, can you, I, I apologize, I came in a few minutes late, uh, did you, um, how did those conversations go?
Um, yeah, thank you, that's, that's a really good question, um, you know, I spoke to administration.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna do this here, we had a caucus on Wednesday to discuss this stuff, so we'll release it, and what you got to make the motion, and then we can have the discussion without passing it, it would give us more time, because we're, we're just gonna rehave the conversation again after this.
I missed the start of this, but.
Say it again?
I'm, I'm lost, Kelly.
I'm, I'm.
So, you want to pass it, move it forward, Ms. Fay just asked for information, for, for information, so we, are we gonna have a, a full-blown caucus like we had on Wednesday, uh, before our full meeting, is my point?
Well, I think it's reasonable to, to get that, uh, information before we.
I agree also, before, okay. Okay, go ahead, Mr.
Oh, yes, thank you, uh, you know, after it was, was in committee, and we had discussions, um, I did reach out to administration, uh, some of the information I received was that once we purchased a streetlight from National Grid, there were going to be smart nodes that will be post, put on, um, the streetlights, a year from there, from that discussion, we're still at square one, there hasn't been any discussion, there hasn't been any update, and, uh, I just think that, uh, looking at the pandemic and the digital divide that exists, and the need to make sure that individuals have access to the internet connection, uh, I think the time has called for us to act as the legislative body for the city of Albany, um, our kids are, okay, yeah, no, good.
No, I just wanted to do a point of clarification, so the streetlights just have, the smart nodes were never able to do the wireless, it's just us owning them gives us the potential to at some point do the wireless, but there was no part of the, the, the current project that we're doing that includes wireless, but absolutely purchasing the streetlights, um, could potentially be a spot for wireless, and there is that technology available.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dosette has her hand up.
I want to unmute. I, I want to go a step further, the conversation was, um, that it would require additional wiring to those light posts in order to activate a wireless, um, capability in our streetlights, so those nodes, you know, did very little to advance, um, this particular cause, it requires a whole other, uh, investment, and I just, um, and, and so really, once we had that conversation, then it really should have been additional follow-up, I think, with the administration about now what, now what are we, um, gonna do to, and, and especially, I want to say, you know, with our students in school, it really is, uh, and struggling to participate remotely, um, it is important for us to address, um, this issue. Personally, I think advancing it via further conversations with the administration, and putting, uh, pressure on them through the leadership, et cetera, would be more effective than passing something that requires the creation of a commission that may or may not advance that, um, particularly quickly.
Uh, I was so, I, I, I think it, I agree with Judy, I think that we should do another committee meeting, and, and, explore this a little bit more with the administration as to next steps, before we, and, you know, I am not necessarily against a commission at all, but I'd like, I feel like it's been sitting for quite a while, so I, I almost think we should get to, hear everyone's views on this, both the administrations and, and others, before we jump into the commission, uh, because it's been so long, I think. That, anyway, that's my opinion. Councilmember Johnson has his hand raised, too, and then Howie.
So, I would just like to add that, uh, when I was a member of the planning committee, that, um, that, uh, component of the light was used as a selling measure about them having the, um, internet nodes, and it was this, uh, conversation that eventually, that, that, that was gonna be the direction that we were going in, that, like, that was used as a selling point, um, for us when we were, uh, making that decision, so, um, I'm in support of it, but I also, uh, feel like the, uh, process, you know, uh, we have to do better at being, uh, consistent with the process, so, um, that, you know, it's no, it's a no-brainer, it's a need for it, so, um, but, I just know that it was, uh, mentioned in the committee meetings that I attended, that, um, that component about it having the ability to, uh, provide, uh, wireless, um, to areas that it wasn't being, uh, provided to, thank you.
Yeah, um, what I wanted to bring up was, uh, in the, uh, spending bill that, I don't know if the president signed it yet, there's $7 billion available for broadband, 3.2 billion of that seven is for low-income families to be able to afford internet access, so, I mean, this just passed, so, we need to be on top of that, make sure that the administration's on top of that, talk to our congressmen and senators, if necessary, to make sure that we, we have, you know, we get some of that funding, it's, it's a lot of money that's out there. To answer Councilman, uh, Johnson, I am a, a network engineer, I design wireless networks, and I brought up at the meeting, more than once, you've gotta run either fiber or some kind of cable to the wireless device that would be up on that telephone pole, so we're talking about major work digging through, unless we go with a mesh type of wireless, which is, you know, kind of, it's newly being developed, but it's not something that we would get in by, before this pandemic's over, but, you know, I, oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, and, uh, just, you know, we talked about this on, uh, Wednesday, but, but, so, since, uh, I mean, it's, it's an important issue, it's an equity issue, uh, we were gonna, um, move it, uh, or discharge it, I think Mr. Anani wants to, but Ms. Fay is chair, and, uh, I don't know if other planning members are, are, are fine with that, also, I'm fine, I support it, uh, but I'm not a, a part of that, uh.
Just, just to, I have a question for our, I defer to our parliamentarian, Mr. Conti, but I thought you had to give a, uh, a notice, one meeting before that you were gonna discharge, and I don't know if that was done, that's what I'm asking.
You need to give, uh, notice, it, it can be discharged by majority vote, provided that notice is given at a regular meeting, prior to the meeting where you make the motion to discharge, alternatively, if it's by unanimous vote, you can make the motion on the same night, if it's unanimous.
That's why I kept bringing up. About the motion.
What, we're, and you mean, right, when you say regular meeting, you mean full meeting or a caucus, the caucus?
Uh, no, the, well, the rules say regular meeting, regular meeting could be a full meeting like tonight.
Okay, okay, so.
But if it's by unanimous, tonight, that, that works, too.
Okay, so just. Animus, moving on it, show of hands, otherwise, we'll do, show of hands, uh. Can, uh, can you count those, JR? But it's not unanimous, it has, it has to be unanimous, correct?
It has to be unanimous.
Okay, so it's not, so.
He can make a motion, discard it for the following.
Right, that's right, Mr. Anani, so that's what.
Hey, I want, I want to, so, you know.
It's, 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 it really frustrates me, Kelly, every time Richard just says, we need further discussion, you're always in agreement with Richard, and it's like, it, it, it just annoys me, it annoys me, when I, during caucus, I made a comment and said. And I'm going to discharge it out of committee, no, most of the people, wait, most of the people that reached out to me, said that they all supported.
One of the.
Procedure is nothing nowadays.
Give me control.
Now, we're gonna go by the procedure, he's going to make a motion.
Right, right.
That's it, he's gonna make a motion.
No one reached out to me about any. Supported, everyone.
And, and help, Mr. Anani, I agree with you on that, but we are where we are now, okay, so, unfortunately, just motion, um, to discharge, and then we'll take it up, uh, the next meeting, all right? All right, so you'll make that motion when that comes up, uh, next, uh, under local laws.
Mr. Mr. Kim, President.
I, I, I'm sorry, I can't see every, go ahead, go ahead, Mr.
So, I, I just want to ask, can, can we, can somebody send us a copy of the local law? I mean, we, it was, it was mentioned at caucus, it did not appear on the active calendar, we, I don't think we were provided with a copy of it, uh, you know, in advance of caucus, so it's kind of hard to have discussion, when we don't, when we're being told, you know, offhand, and the legislation's not being provided to us, so I'd like to get a copy of the legislation.
You're absolutely correct, uh, Mr. Shades, it's not in, uh, in with the package. So, can we do that, and of course, since he's making a motion to discharge, folks will get a chance to review it before our next meeting. Thank you, uh, so, next, uh, agenda item three, local law H, uh, the police department, uh, statistics, uh, reporting, that'll be, uh, for vote, it'll be passed, that's local law H. Uh, next, under local laws, uh, agenda item four, local law I, of 2020, those are both of 2020, uh, and local logic was from 2018, my apologies, so, agenda item four, local law I of 2020, uh, for the use of police.
Local law H, is that Ms. Fredericks, or is that Ballard, I know they're both co-sponsors, but I want to make sure.
Mr. Baller, Mr. Baller's primary.
Gotcha.
Okay, and then, for, uh, agenda item number four, uh, Mr. Johnson's primary, he's the first in the.
Yep, I know that, yep.
All right, so local law I will be, uh, will be voting on, uh, again, Jay, the CPRB legislation needs to work, so, uh, we're, we're gonna be working on that, on to ordinances introduced.
Kelly, um, local law I had to be noted.
It's got an age.
Yeah, it has the age.
We haven't, okay, so.
We just amended it in committee. And age.
The public safety. Okay, I aging.
Is there an amended version that was distributed?
Yes.
Really? Let me see. Let me see.
For, for both of, which one are you talking about, HRI?
I, one second, I'm checking through my emails to report it again. It was sent the 4th of December, I'll send it again.
So, the amendment also has to be made at tonight's meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, uh, we're good, uh, next on to. Oh, and actually, I want to make sure, so, Mr. Johnson, that amendment has to be made, uh, when, uh, Corey, you, Mr. President, you'll call on him, right? To enter, to do, to make the amendment.
Yep.
Okay, so, under ordinance introduced, uh, Ms. Fredericks, 44, 12220, uh, authorizing the closing of Scott Street, that'll go to finance, along with ordinance number 45, 12220, an ordinance, uh, authorizing the sale of Scott Street. That'll go to finance, they'll go together. Okay, the next under ordinance is introduced, it's 46, 12220, uh, for the USDO amendments, uh, that'll be going to planning, and again, uh, there was the request for hard copies, which, uh, I hope, which staff, I requested staff take care of for, for the members that, uh, wanted them.
And this is just introduction from finance committee?
And introduction referral. We're talking about 46, it's an introduction.
Yes, but is finance introducing it, or?
Oh, no, this, Ms. Fay, and it's going to planning.
Gotcha.
Okay, next, is an MC. It's for, under ordinances introduced, MC, 47, 12220, by Ms. Fay, oh, excuse me, Ms. Farrell, and that's the continuing authorization for the bidding process. That'll be by Ms. Farrell, uh, the idea was to pass that tonight, because we're trying to, it expires on the 31st, so we're, we're, okay, right?
Yeah, that needs to be passed tonight.
Okay. Next, uh, onto the ordinances held, to number 12. It's actually, I can kind of do these together, it's 12, 13, and 14, by Ms. Farrell for finance, they were, you had your meeting, they, they passed.
Yes, yes, they were, we had our meeting on Thursday, and they were all passed out of committee, uh, with unanimous approval.
Okay, numbers 12, 13, and 14 on the agenda, if you need, I can read the ordinances numbers. I think everyone, it's okay, okay, next is, uh, I remember 15, uh, by Mr. Howie, uh, will be voting on that also, authorizing the sale, I don't want to butcher his name, of 39 Beach Avenue, 59 and 54.
And that was also passed out of the finance committee with unanimous approval on Thursday.
Thank you. Okay, that was number 15. All right, uh, next on to resolutions introduced, um, by Ms. Farrell, uh, 121, 12220R, uh, and that was a part of your finance committee meeting also?
Yes, um, although, although that's being introduced tonight, um, the administration has asked for us to pass it this evening as well, so we discussed it in our finance committee meeting on Thursday, um, and it's basically to, uh, instead of, um, borrowing more money to go from our debt reserve fund, to pay for some debt, so that we're not borrowing needlessly, especially going into, um, an era where we might need to borrow more. We do have another, I believe they said about $10 million in, uh, debt reserve, so there is still a cushion for this upcoming year, which we might need, hopefully we will not, hopefully, um, the state and the federal government will come through in a major way, but, um, there's still a cushion after this. Go ahead, Judy.
So, I'm sorry, but I need to provide a clarification, um, the purpose of transferring the $3.5 million from the debt reserve to help pay off the debt is so that we are not using fund balance to help pay off that, that debt, um, so it is the fund balance that will have $10 million remaining, uh, what we anticipate is that the debt reserve fund will have, um, very little left in it after this, in the 2021 budget, there's $450,000 being used of the debt reserve, um, uh, fund, um, uh, and they anticipate that there will still be that funding left for the 2021, after we transfer this $3.5 million. But, but, but it will not be, so, it's not the debt reserve fund that will have $10 million left, but the fund balance, and the goal here is, um, that that puts us, um, looking in a stronger position to have that money available in the fund balance, uh, in, in the, uh, undedicated fund balance, rather than having, um, money sitting in debt reserve fund, which can only be used to pay off debt service.
Thank you, Judy.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Judy, so, uh, next resolution is mine, 122, 12220R, uh, that's appointing Paul Collins Hackett to the CPRB, that'll be a pass, uh, he, uh, came before the committee, we interviewed him, and he also came to our last caucus to introduce himself, so folks got a chance to meet Batman, looking forward to having him, uh, on, on board. So, uh, next, uh, in the agenda, we had 123, 122, but that was a with, uh, that's not gonna go forward, that was Mr. Anani's, he's withdrawing it. Next, uh, 124, uh, 12220R is mine, it's appointing, uh, Ms. Fay, a marriage officer, to do some, a nice deed for her friends, so, thank you, uh, that, that'll be, uh, a pass, it's 124, 12220R. Uh, next, we have, uh, resolution by Mr. Johnson, honoring, uh, Father Young, it's, uh, and again, that's an MC, it's, uh, 125, 12220R, and we were all, uh, co-sponsors on that. Will be a pass. Next, uh, it's by me. Uh, from the, on behalf of the Public Safety Committee, it's resolution 126, 12220R, uh, MC, appointing, uh, a number of folks to, uh, the Violence Prevention Task Force. Go ahead, uh, Ms. Gillespie.
Can I get clarification on the numbers? I have something that has, uh, those resolution numbers reversed, I have 126 as being the one honoring the legacy of Father Young, and 125 being the one for, um, the Violence Prevention Task Force. I was just looking for clarification.
Um, Michelle or Jared, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think that was because, um, I had originally, yeah, yeah, I, I had originally thought the resolution about RPTL 1111A was going to be, um, introduced as it should have been, but for my mistake, so, I think, uh, Father Young is now 125, and Violence Prevention Task Force is 126.
126, right, so we reorganized it because the, the 125 is missing, and so we dropped it down, um, so, the, the way I just did that is, is the correct numbering for MCs, for, for.
That's not what I had, but.
Based on agenda that just went out, it's the.
It's the.
Okay.
126.
Okay, so, and that's all good and well, but when we went through this in the meeting, uh, Wednesday's caucus, the way that, the 125 and 126, so, tell, tell me the numbering, Danielle, how, the way it is on the agenda, and we can just follow that.
So, uh, 125 is the Violence Prevention Task Force, and 126 is Father Young.
And that's what I initially had sent via email.
Right, but there was a gap with. Right, but there was a gap with one-twenty-five missing, that's why I adjusted them down, so, okay, we're fine. We're fine right now, so back on track.
I need, I need to, Michelle, didn't you subsequently say, yes, there was another piece of legislation that was actually one-twenty-five?
Right, but it didn't get submitted, it wasn't a part of.
Oh, yeah, well, why don't they confuse us a little?
Right, and that's why I think Brett was just trying to explain how it never made it, so it was.
Correct. I had asked whether they wanted, whether you all wanted to emcee it, or whether you wanted it to wait until the first January meeting, and the latter option.
We'd wait. Right. And so, also, now, we do have the bid re levy as MC one-twenty-seven, am I, we're correct on that?
Yep.
Based on the new agenda, I've got my agenda marked up from last week, I shouldn't have looked at it updated one, so that's, the one-twenty-seven is the bid re levy that's going to be by Ms. Farrell. And that's an MC, and that'll, that'll be a pass. It's one-twenty-seven, one-twenty-two-twenty R.
Kelly, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure, did we discuss the bidding process suspension three-point-oh? It's the one that we passed, this is the third time we're doing it, it's just for the PPE, did we discuss that yet? Okay.
Yeah, that was.
I apologize.
Yeah, forty-seven is ordinance forty-seven. I confused myself enough, I don't need you all confusing me, slow down, okay? All right, so next to resolutions held. Number seven is, it's, it's, Agenda Item Seven, missing, by Mr. Noni Love.
I'm sorry, did you do on the MCs the bid re levy resolutions?
Yeah.
All right.
One-twenty-seven.
The twenty-seven, okay, sorry.
No problem.
Okay, so we're good?
Yes.
All right, so number seven, resolution held by Anani Love and Robinson, it's Resolution eleven-twenty-one of twenty, it's the Black Caucus, Black and Hispanic Caucus Resolution. What I, before I let the sponsor say something, what I would like to say is that I, I wish we had more time to discuss this, when, when it first came out of the Committee, Council, Operations Committee, it, we, we agreed that we were going to slow down, get together a group of, of the, the parties that would be presumably a part of this caucus, to have discussions and work through the, the crafting of it. We did have some meetings and have some discussions, but I personally think, I don't think we're, we're there yet, I do want for us to have this caucus. And of the seven members that are a part of the, the group that would be presumably a part of this, four of us are, are really not there yet and want to have further discussion. But the sponsors want to move forward in any case, which I, I will honor that, but, so I'm putting this out there to say that it, it's, it's, I think it, it needs more time for us to work through the issues, and I was hoping we could have this discussion offline, which we kind of did to an extent earlier, but not quite. And I, I don't know if other members, certainly the sponsors want to be a part of the conversation, and also those members that aren't, who want to take a little bit more time with this, please speak. Mr. Ballerin.
Thank you. I, I, I would like for us to be able to vote for, with this, with having everyone that's going to be a part of it, with a hundred percent support. What I don't want to see is something that is supposed to unite us and bring us together, divide us, and create, create resentment, and you know, negative opportunities. I think we've come a long way, I, I really do think we've come a long way from where we were when we first spoke about this. You know, you know, before this year, when it was just a concept, when we just, you know, we, we sat as a group after being elected. We spoke about this after a council meeting, just a few months after our election, and we've gone, we've gone a long way from where we were. You know, so, and I, and I think that's a good thing. I think we've, we've worked together in a lot of projects, a lot of initiatives, some that are being pushed forward here today, at today's meeting. And we should be proud of that, and we should be proud of the work that we're going to continue to hopefully work on. I just don't want to see this be something that, instead of bringing a group together, highlights and shows any of our differences. We're always going to have differences, but on this issue, on this issue, that shouldn't be what we highlight. You know, and I just want to say that, I, I do hope that we can get that group get it to a place where we don't, we, what I was going to agree, and that's not, that's not the point of this. But what I don't want to see is us air out our, you know, differences, you know, specific topic, you know, publicly. So, I, I would like to, you know, I would, I would like for us, I would have liked for us to have some more time, come together as a group, to discuss our differences, to come together as a group, to be able to work out our differences, and to flush them out, because they, I honestly don't think we're as far as we used to be. And this is something I, I, I want to support. I, I want to see it, I want to vote for it, I want, I, I don't, I don't think anyone doesn't want to vote for this. I mean, and I just want us to be able to work out our differences before it, it becomes a division versus a unification. But that's my two cents.
You're muted.
Okay, who, who was?
I think Councilmember Johnson's hand was up next.
Thank you. So, first and foremost, let me say that I would love to see a black caucus, a minority caucus, a black and Latino caucus. But I would like to see a caucus where we sit down and everyone is heard, and not just the, the voices of part of the group. We, we agreed that we were going to get together, and we're going to work towards being able to work together. And we had one meeting that was, was attended well, and then we had two meetings that were not as well attended. We really didn't do anything in there, but have a real quick conversation. It's things that need to be discussed, and for whatever reason, we not, we haven't had that opportunity to have this full discussion, and for members to be given a text fifteen minutes before a caucus and, and inquiring about their feelings about this legislation, this resolution, is not adequate, it's not an adequate discussion. And then we go the whole weekend, and without discussion, and then we're going to try to have a Zoom call at four o'clock. The conversations that people feel are near and dear, let me let you know something. I take my responsibility as a councilman very seriously. I take the opportunity to speak up on things that happen to us, both good and bad, you know, as a privilege and an honor. And, you know, to be here for three years, and a lot of times, be in situations where I was standing alone from the city's perspective, from the elected official perspective, it makes you feel a little reserved when you see caucus, because a caucus is a group of people that are going to act on, on the betterment of a group of people that have been neglected, and have been not spoken up for. So, you know, one of the things that I'm going to continue to say, is that I would refuse to be a part of a go-along-to-get-along caucus. We've had that, we've had minority leaders that did what was in the best interest of the votes. The caucus shouldn't be about votes, this should be about the people. It should be about, you know, when the people come to us, they shouldn't be told that they need more proof, and, 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 and we need to, you know, sit on it. You know, when people come to us about their experiences, that their experience, whether it's the city workforce, whether it's, you know, them traveling throughout the community and being faced with whatever encounters that make them feel that they need to reach out to us, we should have been addressing that stuff. And the fact that, I'll just say this, if the effort was put forth on the, on the flip side of that, when the community is complaining, as I feel like we being forced to bring this to the floor when we haven't done the work that we need to do between us. There's conversations that need to be had, and people need to be heard, and in order for us to move forward as a group, everybody in the group has to be treated, treated as they're part of the group. And you can't have a message that, yeah, well, if you get in a caucus, then we can talk. But we've been having a small conversation amongst part of the members of the council, and, you know, people just feeling like, you know, regardless, we're going to push forward with how we see things fit. But the unfortunate part about that is that I have to be included in that council. And, and if I'm going to be included in that council, I would like for, you know, us to have the conversation that needs to be had and held in order for us to move forward as a group. Because you can't move forward if we not having the real and the right conversation. Thank you.
Okay. Again, I, I know Ms. Frederick may want to say something, but we're, we're at seven fifteen now, so we're, we're a little over, do you want to say something quick, Ms. Frederick? And then we'll let Mr. Robinson go.
Sure, thank you, Councilman Kimbrough. So I am, I support the caucus, and I would love to vote on it, based on today's discussion and what we've seen here, as well as outside of this meeting, I do think it would be beneficial to have that conversation. But it's ultimately the sponsor's decision, and that's what I got.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson, or sponsors?
For, because of seven-fourteen, and for an interest of time, I'll save, reserve any comments for the floor. However, I would like to thank all of the members who spoke for their concerns. We allowed ample opportunity, we had multiple meetings for members to communicate what their concerns were, and we did our best to try to address every single concern of the members who had concerns with the, with the caucus. We're all going to have differences, we're always not going to agree. But what we will do is, we will act in the best interest of the Black and Hispanic community here in the city of Albany. And so, like I said, I'm just going to reserve the rest of my comments from the floor, but I do appreciate everyone's concern.
Muted.
Been happening a lot. Good, okay.
Yeah, I, I second Mr. Robinson's sentiments, no further, no further. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? No? Okay, that being said, that was the last.
Ken, is it possible to get a straw vote? Because I would hate for this to go on the floor, and not, and not have the votes to be moved forward. Is it possible?
I will not straw vote, I would like to sit at the floor.
Okay.
This, I thought there was one other item. Item number eleven, did I miss it? One-fifteen?
Nope, you're not, you're not, nope, that's my last thing. Yeah, it's item number eleven, resolution one-fifteen, one-twenty-one, twenty, it's by Finance, and it's consented to the transfer of the funds to, for the supervisor's contract. That, you guys discussed that?
And we discussed that on Thursday's meeting, and that also passed through the committee with unanimous support.
All right, so we'll be voting on that, and that's it for the, the agenda. Moving on to Mr. President.
Thank you, so we'll just switch right into our Monday, December twenty-first, twenty-twenty, meeting, our last meeting of two thousand and twenty. So can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani.
Present.
Ballerin.
Yeah.
Here.
Go shut.
Here.
Fahey.
Here.
Farrell.
Here.
Glenn.
Here.
Frederick.
Here.
Howie.
Oh, oh, here.
Igo.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kimbrough.
Here.
Love.
Here.
Brian.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Fifteen members present, no one is absent.
Thank you. Now we put up the flag, so we can do the pledge allegiance, and we will ask everyone in this moment of silence, who can hear my voice, if we during your moment of silence time, remember one of our city's tireless workers, and we'll be discussing that later on agenda, but please remember your thoughts are most dear to us, Father Young, at this time of year. So, that being said, could you please join me with pledge allegiance, and then a moment of silence? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Excuse me, people. Now we'll go to our public comment period, Madam Chair. If anyone signed up for public comment on this.
We have several people signed up for public comment, the first one is Glanisa Galliard, who I'm going to admit in, so she's able to speak.
Thank you. If you can, can she hear me now, or? Thank you, this is our public comment period part of the council meeting on the agenda. You will have five minutes to speak upon any subject or topic you'd like to speak on. At the four-minute mark, I will let you know you have one minute remaining. At this time, council members cannot answer or cannot respond to you at this time during the meeting. This is your time to talk, and our time to listen. If council members choose to address what you've said during public comment, they will do that at a later time in the meeting. And also, when you, before you speak, just give your name, first and last name, and address for the record. With that being said, can the first clerk call the first speaker?
Ms. Glanisa Galliard.
Hello, everyone, my name is Glanisa Galliard, I reside at one-fifty-two and a half Clinton Avenue, in the city of Albany. Well, council, common council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. I just want to take a moment to thank you for everything you do in order to represent your constituents, and I know that this is a thankless job, and at times can be overwhelming. I do want to go through a couple of things really quickly. There's two things that are definite living in the Northeast, one that there is a winter, and two, there will be snow. Um, there's two things that are definite living in the northeast. One, that there is a winter and two, there will be snow. Um, we should have this snow thing down pat. This past weekend's snow emergency debacle made it look like we were rookies. I live on Clinton Avenue, as you know, and this snow emergency implementation was horrific, and I'm being nice and saying horrific. Uh, at the time of this meeting, as of right now, the odd side of our, of Clinton Avenue is not even done. The even side is, but the odd side is not. That's just how bad this implementation, um, of the snow emergency was handled. Um, cars were double parked, which means that they were parked in the middle of the street. Um, and then you have cars not even adhering to the snow emergency on the other side, making, uh, a major thoroughfare such as Clinton Avenue basically impossible to come, to, to travel through. So you have buses, you have trucks on top of cars, looking to park, looking to dig themselves out, cars in the middle of the street, people blocking other cars who are trying to dig out, so they're unable to dig out. It was just chaos. Um, though, and during this time, I'm watching several DGS trucks pass by. I wanna see, say between seven and ten, and ten, none of them with their plows down. Now, living in an urban environment, it's expected that there's going to be cars. It's expected that there's going to be limited parking. And then adding snow on top of that, that's going to make the parking even more limited, which makes it even more important for the city to make sure that they are properly implementing the snow emergencies, getting the snow off the street in order to allow for parking for its constituents. We understand that some people just don't wanna comply, but the city has a remedy for that, which means towing cars. I know some of the, some of the, my neighbors may not like hearing that. However, I complied with it. Other neighbors complied with it. There's really no exception to it. If you're a car owner, you need to be responsible. Dig out your car, move your car. It's going to be hard, but we also expect the city to do their part. For instance, Swan Street, both North Swan and South Swan had no cars parked on it, but those streets were not touched. So it was very hard to ask people to move their cars out of the way when the city's not doing their job and making sure that there's places for these cars to go. It wasn't until about three-quarters away through the emergency where there really correspond is going out about the different lots that were available for people to park as an alternative. However, in my area, I have a lot of people who are elderly, who are retired, who may have difficulty with walking, who may not be able to go down two, three blocks down a hill in order to get to the Sheridan lots. There's two lots on Sheridan, especially since those hills were not touched by, not a plow, not a, 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 um, you know, a shovel, nothing. So we have to understand that, yes, they're all alternatives, but can people in that area access them? And I don't think that was thought about or thought through. My biggest frustration as a constituent and a lifelong resident of the city is the fact that the city didn't get in front of this. And it's my hope that you as council members seek answers from the mayor and other city officials as to what happened and why a major thoroughfare such as Clinton Avenue had so many issues with the snow removal process. Again, my neighbors. I'm sorry, say that again?
One minute remaining.
Not a problem. I'm almost done. Um, my neighbors and I came in front of you about a year or two ago regarding the Swan Street Hill, both North and South Swan, and people sliding up and down it because it's not being plowed properly. That happened again during the snow emergency. Luckily, nobody, um, was hurt or no property was damaged. However, you have emergency vehicles who could not get up that hill because it was not plowed. So I'm not sure what happened. I'm not sure what went wrong. You know, the city of Albany has not, this is not our first snow emergency. This won't be our last. My hope is that this will be our last time with such a chaotic implementation. And my hope that you guys speak with the mayor, speak with, um, the city officials to figure out what happened and fix it so we don't have to go through this again. Thank you.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Mosley.
Mr. Mosley, are you there? I can see him. He just hasn't unmuted himself.
I can see him too. He's still muted.
Can we call the next speaker and come back to him?
There was a stat, um, Jaromowski, I believe, was the name that I could see.
Uh, yes. Scott, and he's there. Hi, Scott. How are you doing this evening?
I'm good. How are you? Um, thank you, council members, for having me. Uh, tonight I speak as a library director, a parent and a resident of the city of Albany. Uh, this city's public library serves, serves thousands of residents by being their primary internet service provider. These individuals are unable to have the internet at home due to financial and other systematic, systemic reasons. If we were a business, this would be me advocating for competition. I love the role that libraries have played to take on this issue. However, we are just a Band-Aid over a serious wound. As a librarian who has served this city for over two decades, I've seen firsthand how severe the digital divide is in our community. My organization in partnership with recreation and the Albany Housing Authority continues to provide public Wi-Fi spots throughout the city. The library with seven locations has expanded hours and access. However, I have not seen the problem go away. The inequality has only become more pronounced with this pandemic. This will not go away when the library safely reopens. As a, as our professional and educational lives move online, we are leaving behind many in our community. Many of them are, are our future, our students, our kids. According to the Pew Research, uh, according to a Pew Research study, thirty percent of parents with children whose schools closed in spring said that their child was very or somewhat likely to face one or more issues with digital instruction. In addition, parents with middle incomes were about twice as likely as parents with higher incomes to report anticipating these issues. Many of these households subscribe to a low-tier service if they can afford the internet at all. We need to assure that every student in the city has a robust and reliable internet connection. I have become convinced that we need to provide the internet in every home if we are to call ourselves a smart and equitable city. I am a firm believer the internet should be treated as a utility, not a charity. It is a necessity. We can continue to piece together programs, including the work the library has been doing. However, if we truly want to solve the problem, we must think bigger. I am here in full support of local law G two zero one eight.
Thank you so much, Scott. Those words. Can a clerk please call the next speaker? I think Mr. Mosley is unmuted now. Or at least it looks like it to me.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Just state your name and your address for the record. Go ahead.
Dennis Mosley, five fifty Merrill Avenue, Albany. Okay.
Yep, you have five minutes. Go right ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to say quickly, um, Father Young, a hero, who I've worked with over almost thirty years off and on, uh, from being down on Green Street in the church, John Kooch and I are there. Worked with him a number of years and, um, want to see about how we could work on doing some honor to him, possibly naming of a street, uh, Father Young Way somewhere, maybe in the south end, because that's where he started out, has a big effect in that area, statewide and probably nationally, really, nationally in terms of peer support, alternatives to incarceration, addiction treatment. And, um, I want to put that out there to the common council, some resolution, some point or somewhere, naming a street after Father Young. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosley, for those words. Uh, can a clerk please call the next speaker?
So now I have some written comments that were submitted. I don't see any other speakers who wish to provide their, um, comments live. But if I may proceed, I have a written comment to share.
All right.
It's from Jason Mudford and it reads as follows. Note, this is under nine hundred words, which, yes, can be read in three minutes. If you cannot read it in that time, email me. I will record me doing it and you can play that at the next meeting. Over the past three to four years, I've complained to the council regarding the rudeness and nuisance of the city plows driving past my property all too aggressively, throwing snow from a travel lane over a parking lane, over a four-feet grass buffer and onto the sidewalk that I've already cleared. However, this is a new level of calling the council to action. Last Thursday, a plow came by at nine AM and it honked to alert people of its presence. And yes, it recovered my sidewalk and I called four-three-four city to report it. It's rude of the city plow to do this, but not something dire. But then, while I was out there shoveling at ten forty-five AM, facing the other way, lifting at the knees a shovel full of snow, I was caught unaware of DGS vehicle five-six-six, which came by and not only threw the snow onto the sidewalk, but hit me squarely with it. That is downright dangerous, dangerous. Fortunately, it was soft snow. Fortunately, there were no blocks of packed ice. Fortunately, I am not frail, but that is not the actual problem. The first problem is that the operator of a city vehicle is either unaware of hitting a pedestrian with a considerable amount of snow, or worse, intentionally doing so is a potentially legally actionable assault of a person. This is technically a hit-and-run section six hundred point two New York vehicle law. Now, let's be clear, I am not personally looking for a payout. However, I do demand a proactive city response to prevent this kind of situation from ever occurring. A response to a situation that I have previously reported to the common council and the mayor's office. Here's my demand. DGS snow removal operators undergo a brief but timely documented annual safety training regarding the operation of vehicles. While some do not need this, the operator of DGS vehicle five-six-six clearly does. The second problem is that the mayor's office never responds, ever. The DGS office never responds, ever. Basically, the lack of response is an intentional and perpetual screw you to the citizens and taxpayers of Albany to fail to address this legitimate concern. The very first time someone produces evidence of personal damage, my taxpayer dollars are wasted on the payout. Plus, someone will have been negligently hurt. Furthermore, the entire lack of response is highly unprofessional. Is this how we want our city to present itself to the world? I would hope not. The third problem, and this is the most serious one, is that when I reported this to the police via phone, I was told that they would send someone. Officer Whitney arrived approximately eleven AM and immediately proceeded to chastise me for a non-event. I tried to cite the law to him, but he persisted in refusing to document the scene. He said, "I am wasting their resources when I call something like this in." A hit-and-run section six hundred point two, Officer Whitney refused to do his job properly. He refused to take the statement, and that's deeply concerning and sadly a pattern of behavior I experienced time and again with Albany police across a number of issues. But that's not even the worst of it. If it's such a non-event, call me back and say so. Don't send a thug Gestapo agent. If you wondered why I have a police trust problem in this city, it's this. Approximately eighty percent of my interactions with the Albany Police Department is me explaining to them what the law actually is and them admitting that I'm right, but still not doing anything about it. They run around picking and choosing what they feel like doing in the moment. They begin, begin conversations with citizens by starting with a chip on their shoulder. I think it's supposed to say conversations, and they ultimately alienate the citizens. I feel truly sorry for the good twenty percent that I've interacted with. I'd love to back the blue, but that, but the data does not support this. No, I fully expect retaliation for this. That's how far my trust is burnt with this city. When I listened to this past week's Albany Police Review Board video, there was a medic who spoke up about being assaulted by Albany PD while administering medical attention to a rubber bullet victim during last summer civil unrest. She said that she collected expand, expanded gas canisters, which were outdated, and she reported how those gases, when expired, form cyanide oxide, which our citizens had to breathe in. "I just wanted all of this documented," said out loud, "heard by other citizens." "When this city comes after me," which I feel they will, "I just wanted it documented that this is how they operate, how you have operated for years. This council has done nothing for me regarding snowplow safety, and I am now the victim of a city vehicle hit-and-run." Nothing for pressuring the mayor's office to do their jobs, nothing for pressuring DGS to operate vehicles safely around pedestrians. When someone gets hurt, it'll be on you. All I ever wanted is an open dialogue about improving Albany systems. It always falls on the deaf ears of a city that swears it cannot improve without citizen involvement. Bull bleep. Hope you all can sleep well at night. I am so done with the inept bureaucracies of Albany. Sincerely, Jason Mudford, Albany citizen and dissident.
Thank you for the comment, public statement. Okay, at this time, public comment period will be closed. And moving on to our, uh, next item on agenda, approval of minutes. Mr. Kimbrough.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Our Monday, December seventh, twenty twenty, meeting minutes for passage.
Second.
Second, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those approved, approval of minutes passed. Continuing on, moving on to, excuse me, people, so sorry. Moving on to local laws, help. Um, Mr. Anani.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I notice, uh, local law G of twenty, two thousand and eighteen, and that was passage.
Now you have to make a motion to discharge it from committee?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to discharge it out of committee.
Thank you. And we can take a voice vote on this. Motion to discharge local law G out of committee. All those in favor? Is here by the same word. All those not in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. Motion passes. And so this will be discharged out of committee and will be taken up at the next common council, uh, meeting for a vote hereon. Continuing on.
Uh, I think Ms. Doshay, sorry, excuse me, Mr. President. No, okay.
I thought we were proceeding to take it up now, which we can't because it was not unanimous.
Yep. Thank you. Now continuing on with local laws, help, uh, Mr. Ballerin.
Thank you, President. Uh, I asked that, uh, we read local law H and pass it.
Thank you, Mr. Ballerin. Can a clerk please read the local law?
Local law amending article one of part one of chapter forty-two, the code of the city of Albany in relation to police department statistics.
Discussion on this local law. Mr. Ballerin?
Um, so this is one of the, the reforms that we're moving forward with. This is about data. I think it's important that we, we collect data and that it's, uh, we have clear data of how we move forward with. I like data. I think it, it's, it gives you a much better understanding of what the, the situation is, how the problem is, and how to address it. And it takes away the, um, you know, you know, maybe this, maybe that. No, hard data is, gives you numbers, raw numbers to work with and to move, uh, uh, policies and issues around those numbers. So I think this is a good, good piece of legislation. I think we've spent quite some time on it. Uh, we spent.
Yes.
Kimbrough.
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fifteen in the affirmative.
Ordinance passes, thank you. And moving on to ordinance is held, next item of general ordinance is held, Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance number thirty-seven point one zero two point two zero and ask for its passage.
Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
Authorizing certain purchases by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of three million seven hundred fifty thousand and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of three million seven hundred fifty thousand serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof, engineering, street construction.
Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Conti?
Uh, yes.
Dosette?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fahy?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fifteen in the affirmative.
Ordinance passes. Continuing on, Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance number three eight point one zero two point two zero and ask for its passage.
Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of six hundred fifty thousand and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of six hundred fifty thousand serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof, engineering, sidewalk reconstruction.
Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Conti?
Uh, yes.
Dosette?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fahy?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
We affirmative.
Ordinance passes. I've lost my police, and Ms. Farrell, I believe you was at the last?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance number thirty-nine point one zero two point two zero and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of three hundred thousand and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of three hundred thousand serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof, engineering, ADA compliance.
Discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Dosette?
Yes.
Fahy?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fifteen in the affirmative.
Thank you. Ordinance passes. Continuing on with ordinance. Ordinance is held, Mr. Howie?
Thank you, Mr. President. On this first day of winter, I notice ordinance forty-two, one twelve, twenty, and ask for its passage on a roll called vote.
Thank you, Ms. Howie. Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the common council authorizing the sale to yearly lucco of city-owned land bordering thirty-nine Beach Avenue, fifty-one Beach Avenue, fifty-four Fountain Avenue, and forty-eight Fountain Avenue. There her on Paper Street.
Any discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Uh, yes.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Dosette?
Yes.
Fahy?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Igo? Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fifteen in the affirmative.
Thank you. Ordinance passes. That concludes our ordinance section. Mr. Kimbrough?
Rest of the ordinances are held.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to resolutions introduced. Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution one two one point one two two point two zero and ask for its introduction. And I'd also like its passage, but I know I'm not supposed to say it exactly like that. Um. Do I say it like that? Okay. It's introduction and passage.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the?
A resolution authorizing the appropriation of five million three hundred thousand from the debt reserve fund to pay for bonded debt obligations.
There any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Uh, yes, co-sponsor, please.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Dosette?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fahy?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fifteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution one twenty-two, one twenty-two, twenty R and ask for its passage, introduction and passage.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council appointing Paul Collins Hackett as a member of the community police review board.
There any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
You missed.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Ballerin?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Conti?
Yes.
Dosette?
Yes.
Fahy?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Lynn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Igo?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
That's fifteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Uh, Mr. Anani, the resolution would look like to withdraw.
It was never, it was just on the agenda, so it never got intro. So it's, it's fine to just skip it.
And going on with resolutions? Introduced? It's Fahy?
No, it's, it's, uh, it's me, sir. Uh, Mr. President. Thank you. Uh, I noticed resolution one twenty-four, one twenty-two, twenty R. Uh, ask for its, uh, intro and passage.
Come on, sorry. Thank you. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council appointing Catherine Fahy as a marriage officer pursuant to Article Three of the Domestic Relations Law of the State of New York.
Any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Uh, yes, co-sponsor, please.
Ballerin?
Where's Kathy?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Dosette?
Somebody muted me. Yes.
Fahy?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Yes, definitely co-sponsor.
Lynn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Howie?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Igo?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Johnson?
I thought the wedding was tonight.
Joe is ready. I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson, I missed your response.
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love? O'Brien?
Yes.
And on top of them.
I'm sorry, Mr. Robinson?
Oh, yes.
Fifteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes.
Thank you, everyone.
Continuing on with resolutions introduced, Mr. Kimbrough?
Okay. My, um, not on mute. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd like to add resolutions one twenty-five, one twenty-six, and one twenty-seven by majority consent.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Now continuing on with resolution introduce, Mr. Kimbrough?
Uh, so we one twenty-five. Okay, uh, I noticed resolution one twenty-five, one twenty-two, twenty R and by major, and ask for its passage.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council appointing members to the Violence Prevention Task Force.
Any discussion on the resolution? Mr. Anani?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, you know, violence is a huge issue here in our city. Um, and we, and it's not unique to the city of Albany. It's all across many urban cities. And I think that this pandemic has even heightened the violence and crime that is plaguing our city. Uh, the violence task force that we are putting forward, um, I sat on all the interviews. Uh, we interviewed the candidates, really, really impressive resume, a wealth of knowledge, the experience is uh, brings them the most qualified, I believe, in the capital region to address the violence issue that we have. So I just want to, um, you know, share that the candidates who were interviewed, these are the best candidates that I believe, and I believe that we are going to move in the right direction with the help of these individuals. Uh, we cannot, violence cannot be the norm in our city. And I'm glad that the council is putting this task force back together and addressing the gun violence that we see. Uh, some people might say it was delayed, but in a day, uh, when it comes to gun violence, it's an ongoing issue, and we're going to keep working to eradicate the violence that is plaguing our city. It is a public health issue, and we have to get rid of this disease. So I want to thank everyone that interviewed, really, really wonderful candidates. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call?
Ms. Frederick has her hand up.
Please.
Ballerin, I saw. Go right ahead, Mr. Ballerin.
I'm sorry, didn't, wasn't sure who, who was getting called on. Thank you, uh, President Ellis. I want to echo the sentiment from Councilman Anani. I think we're, as a city, we're very lucky. We had over nineteen applicants for these positions. Uh, you know, in a series of two days of interviews, uh, many of our interviewees uh, waited quite some time to get interviewed, uh, because of process. So I want to thank everyone that took their time to interview and to be a part of it. Um, these are going to be open meetings, so even if you are not, uh, on the board, I want you to know that your input is still able to be heard. Um, that's what we want. We want residents to be able to share their experiences and share their input on how we can improve this issue. I'm very proud of this group. Uh, this is a very diverse group of individuals that have been appointed today, individuals with different backgrounds, different experiences, different, uh, tools in their toolbox to really address this issue from different perspectives. Um, so I, I, I'm proud of, 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 of the group we're putting together. Um, it's, it's a difficult challenge, um, and we don't expect it to go away overnight. But again, this is a step in the right direction. And by putting a group of individuals that think differently, that come from different backgrounds, that have different perspectives on these issues, uh, I think we're in a better position to actually try to address and make some real, uh, progressive, uh, action towards correcting this, this, this illness in our city. So thank you, and thank you to all those who took their time to volunteer on this, uh, and who took their time to interview.
Thank you, Mr. Ballerin. Who was the other hand I missed?
Ms. Fredericks.
Ms. Fredericks, go right ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, my colleagues, Mr. Anani and Mr. Ballerin, um, said it quite well. So I'll just leave it with mine to say a big thank you to all those that applied. Uh, we had a, a lot of qualified candidates with unique perspectives. So really, I just want to say a big thank you to everyone who applied and are going to serve on this, um, on this much-needed, uh, task force that we put together in the city here. And, um, it really says a lot to everyone who stepped up and they're willing to volunteer their time and address this issue. So again, thank you to all those and looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, Ms. Fredericks. Seeing no discussion, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Ballerin?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Conti?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Dosette?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Fahy?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Farrell?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Lynn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Howie?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Igo?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fifteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Continuing on with resolutions introduced, Mr. Johnson? Thank you, Mr. President. I notice, um, resolution one twenty-six, and I ask for it to be read and, um, passed. Thank you, sir. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council honoring the life and legacy of the father, Peter Young.
Question upon the resolution. Mr. Johnson? Yes. Um. I don't even know where to begin, you know? Um, a- as I think about my life, I always had Father Young, uh, in the background somewhere. And, and so I say that, uh, we all have a Father Young story, and I have mine. He was always there for my father if he felt that father could help him. What stood out most to me was his visionary work in being in front of many issues that were near and dear to the black and brown communities. It is remarkable when you hear his printed story, but if you have the pleasure to hear the unprinted, uh, version, he was instrumental in a lot of our go-tos and their abilities to come through as much as they did in our communities. He was one of the most self-given people I ever met, and I hope that we are blessed and someone is willing to attempt to fill the huge shoes that father has left on our community. Um, you know, um. It's, it's, uh, it's going to be hard the next time that, uh, someone is in need and I can't pick up the phone and call Father Young. Uh, Father Young was, um, the go-to guy's go-to guy. Um, when you hear the story of, um, Bro- Bro-Jack and how he, um, you know, was instrument, how he brought people up from Mississippi. I talked to, um, McKinley Johnson, and he told me that Bro-Jack went to, um, Father Young and told him, "I'm going to get him up here, but you're going to close him, and you're going to get him a job." Um, and so like, you know, to hear the story of Bro-Jack, um, you never, ever heard of that part about Father Young. And it was sad that, um, in his passing, you know, um, some of the, 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 uh, great work that he had did that other people had got a hundred percent credit for, you know, that he played a part. And, you know, he was just one of the most humble men that we, we, we will, um, ever have in this community. And I'm just hoping, like I said, that somebody is willing to step up because there's going to always be a need for the work that Father Young did. And I just would like to say thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, we all are co-sponsors on this resolution. Uh, Ms., Ms. Love, sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Love?
No, you said co-sponsor, yes.
Oh, okay. We're all co-sponsors.
Ms. Fahy had her hand up real quick.
Who? Who?
Yeah, I, uh, I just want to, I can't, you know, I g- I can't say it better than Derek, but I did know Father Young, and I was so, I'm very aware of his selflessness, his great dedication. Um, and what a legacy he leaves here in our community. And, um, he's someone, in his presence, you really, he had such a welcoming spirit. And, uh, again, great man. He will truly, truly be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Kat. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
I thought that was the voice call.
Do you want me to call the roll instead of the voice vote?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, call the voice vote.
Yes, all those in favor.
Deputy President, like, is it Kelly?
All, all those in favor? Hi.
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 Deputy President? Res- resolution passes, thank you. Moving on with introducing resolutions, Ms. Farrell?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution one twenty-seven point one two-two point twenty R and ask for its introduction, or well, and ask for its passage, sorry.
Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Yes, President. Resolution of the common council authorizing the levy of twenty-twenty-one business improvement district charges and authorizing the treasurer to place such charges on the twenty-twenty-one tax bills.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Dosette?
Yes.
Fahy?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love? Is that a, a yes?
Mute yourself, Joyce.
O'Brien? Is that a yes, Councilman O'Brien?
Yes.
And Robinson?
Yes.
Fifteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Moving on to resolutions held, uh, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I notice, uh, resolution eleven point twenty-one dot point twenty R and ask for its passage.
Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Recognizing the Albany Common Council Legislative Black and Hispanic Caucus.
Question on the resolution, Mr. Robinson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just want to say that, um, I am excited about this particular resolution. I believe that we are on the cusp of history with enacting what our ancestors who came before us on the council talked about and dream of, dreamed about, our electates of color that came before us who broke barriers, um, just to sit in the same seats. And we stand high on the shoulders, um, of them today. And we are coming together as a group of, uh, electates of, uh, or unite legislatively, enact on behalf of our city's most underre- underrepresented population. This council is the most diverse in our city's history, and I believe that we would be doing our ancestors a disservice if we don't unite and come together to represent the interest of the black and brown communities here in the city of Albany. Uh, when we think about the type of year that we had where there was social unrest, uh, where COVID had ravaged communities of color, where we are dealing with police brutality and violence affecting our city, our black and brown communities are looking for their black and brown leaders to lead. And we seen it when our community came together despite their differences to show us what happens when you come together and organize, that you can make change. And yes, not all of us agree on some of the issues. But Mahatma Gandhi said that honest disagreement is often a sign of progress. And so tonight, I encourage all of my council members to vote yes on this particular resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson, further discussion? Seeing none, can the clerk please call?
Hold, hold.
Thank you. I wish people would like, I know there's a delay, but, you know, I saw Mr. Conti, Mr. Anani, going by with hands, I saw it come up, Mr. Conti, Mr. Anani, Mr. Dushet, Mr. Johnson, and then Mr. Kimbra, in that order. Go ahead, Mr. Conti.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to explain my vote. First, want to be very clear that any member of the council, um, or group of members, uh, may form a caucus surrounding issues or, or concerns in which there's a commonality for those members to come together uh, and, uh, work together on, on those issues. It's, it does not require, nor should it require, permission from the council uh, for members to work together, form a caucus, to freely associate. Um, and so it's important, uh, to recognize that this resolution itself does not form a caucus, um, which, but it recognizes a caucus, which based on discussion earlier, apparently there's, doesn't exist at this point, or there's not agreement on it. So the resolution in recognizing a caucus that has not gelled yet is probably premature. And of course, I have no problem, uh, with members forming a caucus, or the black and Hispanic members forming a caucus. Uh, I wish some of the members would be a little bit more respectful, uh, when I'm speaking. Again, no problem with that. I have no problem passing a resolution which recognizes the caucus and recognizes the caucus as a voice of the black and Hispanic, uh, community. Um, but as I said, I don't think we're there yet and that all the members are together on that yet, uh, to, to pass this resolution. Also, uh, I, my understanding is this is somewhat based on a resolution that was passed by the county legislature. And again, the, the situation between our council and the county legislature are entirely different. Um, we are, as the resolution and as Mr. Robinson indicated, very diverse. Um, we celebrate that diversity, um, and members, uh, have representation. In the county legislature, the black and Hispanic members are a small minority, and the purpose there is, I understand, of the caucus resolution was to create a leadership role for those members within that larger body where there wasn't representation. Indeed, as far as the council is concerned, um, half the members are black or Hispanic. Um, and two-thirds of the leadership positions are occupied by black or Hispanic, or people of color, um, which the resolution doesn't note, uh, in terms of the progress and the representation that's made. So, um, I will be voting present. Uh, as I said, I have no objection. Um, I encourage members to, to get together, form a caucus, to address issues of concern. Uh, that's not the issue here tonight. Uh, but again, premature to adopt a resolution recognizing a caucus that hasn't come together yet. Uh, and I think it's important that that first step has to happen, uh, to pass a resolution like this. Um, and again, it's not, the resolution itself is not a prerequisite to forming a caucus. And I think some of the language should reflect a little bit more in terms of the progress in ter- especially in terms of leadership positions that have been made on this council, uh, to recognize, uh, where we've come. Um, so with that, I just wanted to explain my vote and, uh, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Mr. Anani?
Um, thank you, Mr. President. Where do I begin, right? This resolution, uh, is not new. It's not new to any member of this council, right? Uh, this resolution, I believe, was initially introduced about a year ago. And I know that there are some people who had some, uh, you know, some suggestions. And today, I'm actually hearing about some recommendations as it relates to what could be added to this resolution as relates to recognizing, uh, leadership that e- exists here in the city, in Albany County Council. And this, it just reminds me of the equity agenda, right? Uh, whenever there is any type of legislation that has to, is led by black and brown people, we need further discussion, where are we gonna get the money from? Um, and it's similar in the sense that the equity agenda was introduced several months before actually was brought up for a vote. And it was zero recommendations that was brought up from individuals who were, it, honestly, if they really wanted to make some amendments to it, I believe they would have sent amendments a little bit early. Um, and, and on the cusp of it being voted, there are individuals who all of a sudden are concerned with, uh, suggestions that they had forward. You know, if this was a, a well-intentioned suggestion, this intent, this suggestion would have been sent a month ago, not the day of, uh, the vote. Um, you know, I think it's important, uh, individuals like, well, this is a feel-good legislation. This is a feel-good legislation, doesn't really do nothing. Uh, oh, I've been on the council for three years and, you know, some of the people that are saying there's a feel-good legislation, you have had your fair share of feel-good legislations introduced and passed. This is about inspiring and bringing people of color together, but also to let residents of the city of Albany, particularly the residents who look like the elected officials who are gonna be part of this group, know that there is hope, that we're working to come together to address their needs and their issues and their concerns. The city, no doubt, has diversified over the last few years, and that change is reflected in diversity that exists on the Albany County Council. The increase in diversity of Albany means that we need to develop an institution within our city government to better advocate and represent our historic underrepresented groups, particularly our grown African-Americans and Hispanic communities. This caucus will ensure that our council and our city government as a whole will be better able to respond to the needs of our city communities of color. Considering the rhetoric that we have witnessed in this, the year that we have had, i- i- the rhetoric that's coming out of 1600 Pennsylvania, the police tensions that has existed in our city, it is now more important than ever to ensure that the people of color have a voice in local government. The Common Council Black and Hispanic Caucus is one way we can further make this a reality. We want to make sure that we are a community and all neighborhoods that work. And this resolution is to inspire the individuals, particularly black and brown people, that have been beaten with issues as Trayvon Martin, issues as Breonna Taylor, you see George Floyd, uh, the list go on. And even locally, you have Elizah Williams, Dante Ivy, where individuals have had a long year. And I think that is important. Even this is to give a sense of hope that we're working towards something that would inspire individuals is a step in the right direction. So again, as one of the prime sponsors, I unequivocally support this resolution, and I want to thank every single council member who will be supporting this. I know there are some people who have reached out to me behind the scenes that say they support this. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Hi, Ms. Dushet.
I am unmuted. Um, thank you. Um, I agree with the comments made by, um, Councilmember Conti. Uh, I'm glad to recognize, uh, Black and Hispanic Caucus when one exists. But during our conversations, during our caucus, um, I was hearing that a majority of the people who fit the description of the people who would be participants in this caucus are, don't feel like you're there yet with regard to the establishment of a caucus. So I don't know what we are recognizing here if a caucus does not exist, if a majority of members who fit the description of the caucus described in this resolution do not feel as though you're there yet. So based upon that, um, I too will be voting present. I do think that, um, it's important for, uh, the conversations to continue so that there is some agreement on, uh, what a caucus is. I'd recommend some bylaws, uh, be developed potentially, uh, so that, so that we know what the caucus is, how it's, who's going to be speaking, uh, for the caucus, um, et cetera. And so I will be voting present on this. I'm just simply confused by this being brought up for a vote tonight.
Team, Ms. Dushet, Mr. John?
Uh, how can I say it? Like, I'm, I'm almost embarrassed that I'm forced to have this conversation right now and like this. But, you know, um, I will say this, right? A caucus is definitely necessary when you have groups of people that are working together. All right? Um, and this ca- and this caucus is, is not, um, um, been a misunderstanding that people had concerns. And, you know, um, I just feel like the leadership of this resolution of, um, are moving in the same manner that our, um, mayor moved. You know, they go for ten votes, and then when they get those ten votes, they can care where anybody else does. And, you know, um, I would like to say thank you to the colleagues that spoke up and said that, um, it's hard to be a caucus if, if people aren't on board. And, you know, I am not on board as this is going because we didn't do what we said we were gonna do. And, you know, um, the people have spoke, we spoke in private, and, you know, people's mindset is that they're just gonna do what they want to do. You know, uh, we, um, um, it's, it's times in these moments that we have stood together. And when we stood together, you know, people broke off and acted as individuals, didn't even talk to the group. You know, I had to find out information from third, fourth, and fifth party about what was going on over, um, stuff that we did together. So, you know, um, moving forward, it's hard for me to look at this group and get that feeling that we can work together because of the constant undermining that goes on. You know, um, when you feel like you don't have to reach out to people, but yet you're gonna move forward with something that's gonna include people's names in it, we had that experience earlier this year with a different caucus, and it wasn't a good feeling. So I say that, um, in order for us to, um, get on board, we gotta sit down at the table and have real conversation. And, you know, um, for three people to feel like, okay, since we, because we agree that we're just gonna move forward and put people on the spot, because tonight, what we, what you have is you putting people on the spot. How many people are gonna vote against, you know, a, a black caucus? Especially at this time. Well, I'm one of those people that's prepared to vote against this caucus the way that it is, uh, presented. You know, we, uh, reached out and we spoke and asked if we can table it so we can have the honest conversation that we have been avoiding. And when, uh, people say that we had a meeting, yeah, we had a meeting. We had one meeting. We had one meeting where, um, um, I believe everyone was in attendance. And then, uh, for us to, um, try it two weeks after that, so that's three weeks that we attempted to have a meeting. And then for six, um, months to go by, and then for a text to come out fifteen minutes before caucus that only one person responded to, and that's, uh, uh, sufficient time, but that sounds a lot like how business is done with us from the corner of, and that's the reason why I can't support this resolution because it's doing the same type of, you know, uh, go-along-to-get-along approach that, you know, we have a problem about when it's done to us. And historically, when we think about, um, some of our, um, leaders of the past, a lot of times, they didn't like what was done to them, but they came back and did the same thing to us. And I don't want to be a part of that. And that's why, you know, when, uh, when, when Alizar, when the incident happened, when Alizar was out of town, but soon as I, I got back to town, for some reason, I got the phone call. And I stood out there with the people who stood next to them when, when, wasn't anybody else paying attention to, um, Alizar? You know, when we gonna, if we gonna throw people's names up, you know, uh, it would have been nice if you were there to support them when, when the incident took place. And, you know, um, I just feel like, uh, when we try to have these conversations, you know, I get calls from people all over the city that complain about how they're being treated, the things that are being done to them, and some of the sponsors, I call them first and foremost. And they always take a wait-and-see approach. But, you know, we so aggressive, I'm putting forward a caucus. You know, I would be able to, I'd be willing to caucus with anybody whose energy was in front of stuff and not, not behind stuff. You know, um, our people do deserve to see the leaders working together, but not just in resolutions. They need to see the people out there, uh, voicing the concerns of the unpopular, uh, issues. And, and they, they, they are owed that. So, you know, when I see this aggression towards forming a group that, you know, isn't operating as a group, we can't sit there and say that we're a caucus because we haven't done anything caucus-like. The time that we came together, it was a no-brainer. Why will I, uh, why would we accept the responsibility for a park, an additional park, when we can't take care of the parks that we have? Why would we assume, um, 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 the debts that we assume with that bridge? You know, um, everybody agreed one night that it shouldn't happen. And then two people went and had a, um, a, a meeting and, and unbeknownst to a lot of people, because it was definitely not, um, introduced to me and it wasn't shared to me. So, you know, when you talk about caucus, you know, we had three years, uh, and we had, um, a year plus in between when we had that first meeting. Nothing changed. The only thing changed is we lost a, um, colleague. They moved on to another, um, position and we got a new person there. And then immediately, soon as that colleague, um, um, left, once again, no communication, just we came to, um, cap, uh, caucus, and that's how I was introduced, reintroduced. That's how I was introduced to this resolution. I just popped up at caucus and it sprung up on me, just like, I looked at my, um, phone this week and I saw it was coming out again. So, you know, when you say that, you know, uh, we're coming together, we don't come together because of a piece of paper. We don't come together because of a resolution. We come together because we work together. And so, um, when you feel that you don't need to reach out to the, um, members that are involved in this caucus, that's problematic in itself. And, you know, people spoke and, um, um, the, the, um, the, the choice was, we're moving forward ahead. How could you move forward ahead on behalf of a group that everybody is not, you know, um, um, willing to move forward? At that time, we are forcing people's hands. And like I said, I will not be supporting, um, this, uh, resolution tonight. And it's unfortunate that we have to have this conversation, but I think that our people deserve better. You know, our people have moments when they need us and, you know, um, they have been lonely, um, a lot of the times in these three years. And so when we do stuff for the people, it's not just the, uh, stuff that we do in the chambers. It's not just the stuff that we do through, um, resolutions. It's, um, day-to-day stuff. So, thank you.
Mr. Kimbra?
Yeah, uh, so I mean, Mr. Johnson said a lot. I, I agree with, uh, the sentiment and, and the ideas. I spoke at the caucus earlier. Uh, my thing is, I, I, I think we can do better than this. I support the caucus, though I'll be voting present on this. Uh, we can do better than this resolution. We can do better putting this together for our folks. There is nothing in this couple-of-paragraph resolution that we can't do right now as, uh, as council members, coming together and working together. And I've said this before in our, in our conversations, we don't, we don't need approval to do this stuff. We should just be doing it. Um, and, and establishing it through this resolution isn't gonna make us do the work. It isn't gonna bring us together if we're not already together, not already, uh, working together. And I would, uh, also like to, to mention that it's, it's up to us to decide what we wanted this to look like, and that's what we kind of set out to do, but we still needed to share some of this stuff with other council members. Not to go back and say, "Do you approve of this?", but to say, "This is what we want to do." And I think we got a diverse enough and a supportive enough council, all of us, that folks that folks would go along with with what we came up and thought would be best for us for representing our our folks. Um, we're rushing this. Um, I I don't think there's any chance that it won't pass if if this that put off like I asked earlier, but we are where we are. Um, and, uh, that's, that's why I'll be, uh, voting the way I I vote. So, thank you.
Any further, uh, Mr. Mr. Ballard?
Uh, thank you, President Ellis. Um, this was what I was hoping we could settle, uh, in private. You know, when when thirty percent of the group doesn't feel comfortable voting with it, uh, I I I wish we would have paused to to try to address, uh, these issues, um, and try to address these concerns. But I have to be honest. I I I wish we would have settled it before we came and had this public and and, um, ugly, uh, back and forth. I mean, this is something that is about bringing us together to address the issues in our communities. Um, our communities, which are some of the most vulnerable, some of the most impoverished, some of the lacking resources, uh, our communities that have seen pain, all of our communities has seen pain this year. So you to showcase our differences so publicly, I wish we could have avoided. And I do think we have made some progress. I do think we've made some progress. I think we still have a long way to go as it's as it's very publicly seen here. But I do think we've made some public, pub, pub, progress. And, uh, I'm gonna vote for this and and I'm gonna vote for it because I can't see this fail. I can't see this not move forward and we're gonna have to figure out differences, get back in the room and work it out because that's what we have to do. And we can't let this fail. I would have liked for us to have waited. I would have liked for us to have pushed this back. I would have liked for us to be able to have all seven members feeling comfortable enough to support this because that's what this deserves. I would have liked to be able to have fifteen of our partners in city government feel comfortable with pushing this forward. But I can't let this fail. Um, and I can't let our differences get in the way of something that has potential. But I'm going to put it on the group that is pushing this. Now the, it's on you. It's on you to heal these divisions. It's on you to reach out. It's on you to find ways to bring the group back together in a productive manner. Um, but I will be voting in support of this and I ask my colleagues, I ask you. I ask you, I know you have differences. I know you don't like the way it was pushed through. I know you're not happy with it. But I'm asking you, don't let this fail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. And, um, Ms. Farrell, I saw your hand up.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I highly respect all of you, every single member that I'm fortunate to serve with. It is an honor to serve with every single one of you. And, um, what I love about us is, um, we don't all agree. Um, but we all care deeply about every single resident in the city. Um, when they are nice to us and when they're not and when they're good and everything, we all, I care about our community. Um, this is certainly a difficult position to put some people in. But as someone that there are quite a few black and brown people in my board, there is no way that I could vote against this. Um, if there is a black and brown caucus, um, of course, I'm going to support it. If I was putting together a women's caucus, um, I would hope that people would support that. So I fully believe that, um, everyone will be able to come together. And I look forward to working with this caucus to help represent the whole city and including the black and brown people on my board.
I've been seeing more hands. With that being said, can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Ballard.
Yes.
Uh, present.
No shit.
Present.
Behi.
Yes.
Barrel.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes.
Frederick.
Yes.
Holly.
Yes.
Igo.
Present.
Johnson.
No.
Kimbrough.
Present.
Love.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
So I have ten in the affirmative. Four present votes and one no vote.
Resolution passed.
Yes, yes, yes.
Uh, Ms., continuing on with resolutions held, Ms., uh, Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed resolution number one fifteen point one two one point twenty R and ask for its passage.
Can the clerk please read the resolution?
I sure can, Mr. President. A resolution of the common council consenting to the transfer of unassigned funds to cover wage increases owed under Albany Police Supervisors Association collective bargaining bargaining agreement.
So are you discussing on the resolution? See, none. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani.
Yes.
Ballard.
Yes.
Auntie.
Yes.
No shit.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Behi.
Yes.
Barrel.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick.
Yes.
Holly.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Igo.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Johnson.
Yeah.
Kimbrough.
Yes.
Love.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Fifteen in the affirmative.
That's, that's good. She passes. So that's all. Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, the rest, uh, the items that need agenda are held. Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Don't we have Commissioner Deeds?
I don't, me either.
Um, yeah, don't, don't we? Don't we have some, um, we have Commissioner Deeds?
I didn't see it.
It was sent like.
I wanna be a Commissioner of Deeds. I don't know.
I ain't see it on agenda. Ms. Farrell, you saw it.
I did, yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I notice the following, um, the following persons be hereby appointed for a Commissioner of Deeds for the City of Albany for the term ending in December thirty first, twenty twenty two and waive the reading of the names.
Second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Holly. All those in favor?
Oh.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And miscellaneous?
Yes.
Holly?
Yes, um, I just wanted, uh, because there was a public comment about snow. This was a terrible storm. I mean, it's like, and I hope this isn't with global climate change that we're not gonna be de- dealing with this every year. But if we are, we're gonna have to come up with a way to better prepare our citizens for this type of, um, snowfall. Uh, one of the things I wanna bring up, there was two nurses in my neighborhood. Um, and you've heard me say it all the time, we don't have sidewalks. And what was really nice on Villa Avenue, the neighbors got together and dug a little pathway so the woman could get out to the main road on Magazine Street and her nephew picked her up and brought her to St. Peter's. Um, we gotta figure out a way that, you know, and again, it's it's pie in the sky, but it's stuff to think about in a smart city that we know where our emergency responders are and make sure, you know, ask them actually to volunteer, let us know where they live and stuff. Those roads should be the first ones done to get our people to the hospitals, uh, that take care of us for the fire department, to make sure that they can get to work. So it's just one of those things I wanted to bring up. Um, you know, we had trucks break down is what I heard. I know Schenectady had problems. So yeah, there's there's problems out there and as a council, I think we should at some point address it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any discussion, Mr. Anani?
So I think, uh, Mr. Johnson, how does he raise?
Go on, Mr. Anani, you got it. He called on you. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. And you know, I had some remarks that I was going to, uh, say for my, uh, local orgy. But I would, um, like to just share some of the sentiments, uh, Mr. President. More now than ever, we need municipal internet for Albany families. COVID has revealed the further inequities in our city, the nation and the world. And I've shown just how important the digital knowledge and connectivity is. And during COVID nineteen pandemic, the City School District of Albany measured the digital divide amongst our students to be upwards of forty percent, which has posed a significant challenge indeed in this day and age. Computers, internet access and technology training and other support programs have become essential to the new digital economy. And a digital knowledge has become a necessary skill in COVID nineteen pandemic. And for the future of our nation and also for our city. For too long, the people of Albany have been forced to deal with subpar service. And in twenty twenty, we have technologically fallen behind the curve. And we have seen the last nine months, the implication of that. We learned firsthand that reliable internet connection determine whether or not a child has the ability to attend classes when the schools are shut down. We learned how many people had new barriers to jobs or rely relief because they did not have a reliable internet. We learned how many people cannot even communicate with their loved ones. When the nurses' homes and hospitals were closed to visitors and Zoom wasn't even an option because they didn't have a reliable internet. Fellow council members, you you have people who do not have the opportunity to see the council meetings because they don't have internet connection. I bring this up as an example because these illustrate the importance of internet and in everyday lives and how the lack of access creates substantial barriers to various opportunities. The internet is no longer just a fun place to browse around and chat with people. It's an important utility as telephone service was in nineteen thirties. And electricity was at the dawn of the twentieth century. We need to take a serious look at how to ensure people in our city aren't left behind when it comes to access to a reliable internet connection. The primary internet provider in Albany, Spectrum Greed, charges too much and provide too little. And they are being forced out of the state as a service provider based upon their years of continued underperformance. Verizon Files and other providers simply refuse to provide internet service in this city, effectively depriving us of the market competition that could provide better quality and more affordable service. We rely on internet to look for jobs, to do homework, to attend classes, to request service, including city services. It has become clear that everyone needs a home connection. It is essential that twenty nine percent of current Albany residents do not have a home internet and are left behind simply because they cannot afford to pay for internet connection. Without viable alternatives, we need to take matters into our own hands to rectify this situation. And the most effective way of doing that is to create a municipal internet service. And I've asked for your support in establishing a commission to investigate the possibility of setting up a municipal-run, citizen-owned internet service to ensure that we have affordable, reliable, high-speed internet to address the digital divide that exists in our city. It is undisputable fact that the cities with the fastest and more affordable internet service are those that have municipal-run internet service. Because like a public utility, the expectation is that they will deliver the best quality service for the money. Secondly, this focus, this forces any other telecom company to compete and ultimately improve the quality of their services. Finally, the citizens of Albany own consistently make efforts to extend services and to sh- ensure that it remains affordable to all customers. Establishing a successful, affordable and reliable municipal broadband service would be a game changer, which will positively impact economic development. I'm optimistic tech firms, businesses both small and large will be more likely to locate and do business in the City of Albany. People will be more likely to move into the city with the assurance of reliable internet services. Partnering with the school district and public libraries, the City of Albany could ensure that every child has access to high-speed internet connection, something that we currently are not able to do with Spectrum Greed. Keeping in mind that this is something that can't be developed overnight. This is something that requires a great deal of coordination, planning and commitment, which is why this legislation proposed creating a commission to determine the feasibility and developing a plan for how the City of Albany can establish a municipal internet service. Bottom line, this is a transformative project, like this one needs to be done right. And I will bring this up for next council and I'm optimistic with the new year, there might be some people who are not going to, you know, couch around procedure and support it because it's the right thing to do. This is a transformative project. Individuals talk about addressing the equity issue. This is an equity issue. And I'm not surprised that some people who represent different districts where there is ninety percent connectivity are in opposition or wanting further discussion. But this is to address the families who are being left out with the digital divide, who are being left out in these challenging times. A vote to authorize this commission is a vote to begin chartering the technologicals future in our city. It is a vote to say to our kids that not having a reliable internet connection will no longer be a barrier to your education. Mr. President, I don't, I I wish that Christmas would have came early with this vote on this. But you know what? Frederick Douglass said, there's no progress without struggle. Frederick Douglass said, "There's no progress without struggle." And quite frankly, I've come to get used to it. And I hope that next year, we will get this done. This is more than an equity issue, this is for the future of our kids. They are already struggling to do remote learning. It is a challenge in itself. And if we don't do our part, if we don't do our part, we are setting ourselves back. Because if our kids are not educated, we know the direction that happens. We will see gun violence, what we're witnessing. We will see crime in our city that we're witnessing. So from my interpretation, the violence equates to educational opportunity. It also equates to economic opportunity. And I hope that we could provide that opportunity for our future. Thank you, Mr. President.
Joe, you look good, by the way. Well dapper. There's no other comments?
No, I have a comment.
Mr. Thompson, yes, right, go ahead.
So I just want to, uh, follow up because here it is, another council meeting, right? And we just had this snowstorm, and we have one council member, um, speak on the snowstorm, and we have, um, uh, one of our residents speak on it. You know, I think that that just goes to show the faith that the people have in their issues being heard and something being done about it. Because all of us know that we got multiple phone calls about, um, the last two storms. If we go back and check the record last year, uh, at that last sto- snowstorm, I said that we felt miserable. And, you know, um, um, changes are constantly being made to personnel, work personnel throughout our city is brought to our attention, and we do nothing about it. And I understand that, you know, the mayor has the ability to select whatever commissioner that she wants. But I also understand that we, if, you know, when it's time for us to stand together, if we stood together and, you know, um, spoke to, uh, the sentiments that are shared with us. Because, you know what? A lot of times when people call, uh, their, their councilperson in their ward, and they, and, and they don't get the response, that's how other people, uh, in other wards start getting phone calls. So, you know, um, the, uh, I, I, and I understand that it was the eighth or the ninth largest, uh, snowstorm. So that means that it was eight other, uh, snowstorms that were larger, or nine other lar- larger snowstorms that were handled better than that snow, snowstorm was handled. And, you know, um, we, we all got, um, calls about people who had health issues, health issues, and they couldn't get past the street. And I think that the, um, laissez-faire approach to letting the snow come down, and then we're going to send the cars out, is not the right approach. Um, and, and, you know, like, I always bragged about the City of Albany when it came to snow removal, because whatever, um, came down, I don't know where it went. It didn't stay in the streets as long as, um, the streets. Like, the people on Charles Place should not have to call me every single snowstorm to get a, a, a car over to clear out their, um, street. Every single snowstorm in my, um, tenure as a councilman, they have had to call me since, um, um, whatever, uh, person retired. And so like, it's many changes that's going on in our city that we just don't talk about. You know, uh, we call these commissioners in to our committee meetings, and it's like a joke to go through some of these committee meetings to, uh, when you try to address what's going on. So, you know, my heart hurts right now because, you know, our city just got another, uh, paper, uh, resolution. And, you know, I feel like we deserve better. I feel, um, you know, God forbid, if I had to make it to work that, uh, uh, on time that morning, because I wouldn't have been able to get off my street. And, and it's funny, I know, uh, my street is directly connected to, um, Division Two. And I see, uh, uh, APD come down my street every day. So when I got a call at eight o'clock that our street wasn't plowed, I couldn't believe it because you just automatically assume the police have to get through. And then when I came out on Friday to see the state of the city, it was ver- it was very, um, bothersome and troublesome that, you know, um, we didn't have more conversation. You know, I'm bothered when it's murders during the week when we are losing lives, and that, these don't, it doesn't come up in our discussion. And I'm, you know, like, I, I feel like I'm the one that's always talking about that stuff. And, and I'm tired of hearing me talk about it. So I can imagine how y'all are, um, feel. And I'm, I'm, I'm bothered tonight because, you know, the issues in our, uh, community are, 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 you know, like, you got people coming, uh, before us wanting raises. We're giving raises to people that are failing, failing us as a, um, city. And then people are losing jobs, and people are losing hours and losing benefits. So, you know, um, when it comes to the avocation of the people, I would like to see, um, um, uh, people get active because there's too much going on in our city uh, for people to act like they don't hear what's going on and for nothing to be done. Our streets deserve, uh, better, uh, treatment during a snowstorm. There's people that have to get to work, and they're, um, they're, they're faced with losing money. And that's not helping households. And, you know, uh, for us to act like we don't see the changes. If you, I don't care if you live here for ten years or more, you see a, a steady decline in the service that we're getting in our community. So, you know, I, I, I just feel like something needs to be said about that. I'm, I'm dissatisfied with the services that are coming out of DGS, especially during snow time. Thank you.
O'Brien?
Okay, um, yeah, I've gotten complaints myself. So I, I put this idea out. Uh, would it be good, um, to have either in the committee or in the caucus a meeting with a report on how long it took to clear streets? I mean, from my experience in dealing with DGS for nineteen years, the thing that got the most action is when you take pictures, photographs with dates on them and mail them to them, particularly if you do it as see, click, fix. And if you tally it up, and if you publicly disclose it, mail it to them, put it on websites, whatever, that usually gets a response and a follow-up. I know this is a big storm, so obviously, uh, you know, there was a lot of, you know, I, my street didn't get really plowed out until the following day. Um, but I leave that up to you. And, I mean, do you want a general services committee meeting? Do you want a caucus with these folks coming in and showing, I don't know, how long it took to adequately pull out cars and clear streets? Uh, or, or don't we? I mean, I'll leave that choice up, up to the collective, collective, collective intent of the council.
As a member of the DGS committee, I'm in favor of both, or whatever works. But, yeah.
Yeah, his hand go up as well, so.
You know what?
Put a thumbs up.
Corey?
Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, I'd just like to, uh, take a minute and thank those DGS workers that have been out there doing twelve-hour shifts or whatever, being undermanned, and probably the, we didn't have enough equipment, okay? I thank DOT, I thank the thruway authority coming in, they're still working, we're still cleaning out streets all day tomorrow and the next couple of days, removing snow. So it was a big storm. I've seen some, uh, some bad ones. And, uh, one suggestion I have to, uh, Mr. Hoy, and maybe we can discuss it in, uh, public safety, uh, about those nurses. I remember storms years ago when they had, uh, those skidoo's, and the cops had them, and they actually brought people to the hospitals. Now we have big SUVs and, uh, they could probably set something up like that, so. But, uh, this was a big one. And, uh, I got to thank everybody instead of just knocking on everybody, but I know it needs some help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tydones. Ballerin?
Um, it was a big one, and it, it's, it's, it's still, uh, still a mess. Um, I do think, you know, I do think we, we need to bring in our DGS, uh, Commissioner and, uh, ask him what could have done, been done better. Uh, and it's not a, uh, a hit on the men and women that were out there in the cold, doing twelve-hour shifts, doing the best they could with the equipment that they have. It's not a knock on them at all to see what is it that is needed to be able to address these types of storms. Um, but it was rough. Uh, I thought I was ready. I, I had my truck, my two snow blowers, I thought I was ready. And, you know, one of my snow blowers is dead now. So, and I was still shoveling people out this morning. So, um, it was a bad storm. It was a bad storm. And I think, I, I, I don't think we, we take away from those who did the best they could with the resources that they had to have a meeting to see what, what additional resources could have helped the process? What additional resources could have made it easier for those individuals that are out there, you know, doing the best that they can? So, no, I, I think it's a good idea, Mike, uh, if you want to have a committee meeting and, uh, see what we, we, how we can, how we can do it better. There's no, this takes nothing away from the people who did the best they could. It's for us to see how we can do better.
Uh, Mike, we couldn't hear you on that. Um, but I just want to say I do support a committee to take a look, a closer look at this. I agree with Joe and others who have, uh, you know, recognized the incredible work that these DGS workers have done here. Uh, you know, that, those thoughts about, is this, um, are we going to have more of these storms? So we had that one big storm last year. Is this, is this what climate change, is this one of the things that's resulting from climate change? And we've got to be better prepared. But I, I, I know our Commissioner, um, you know, he's very interested in getting the data, getting the statistics. So I, I think we can have that conversation with him about, uh, um, you know, how we move forward and do an even better job with, uh, snow removal here in the city. And, uh, Mike, I'll talk to you separately about my resolution, which has sat there now for a long time.
Yeah, about sidewalks.
And I put that, so, you know, we can't forget too how, um, how, um, this impedes people who, not everybody drives, and, uh, you know, sidewalks aren't cleared. So there's a lot to talk about. Um, and we should have that meeting, thank you.
The reason why I bring up the alternative to go to caucus, the caucus draws a bigger audience than a DGS meeting. But I'd be willing to do it, whatever the collective, uh, opinion is.
Can I just give one other reminder? In case anybody knows, they are down heavy equipment operators, which is a setback, and they're still down employees. Uh, they've been down for probably nine months, and they filled some. But, uh, now they might be getting bonuses again, more people might not want to come back to work. Thank you.
Which is why we should pay them better.
Yeah.
From the get-go, exactly why we should do it. Sorry, just had to put that in there.
Make a motion in the meeting, uh?
Motion.
There you go.
Don't forget our picture, people.
Yeah, make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Do the second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Jeff.
Okay.
We got to take a picture?
What picture?
Yes, let me know when you're ready. Okay.
So does this mean we're not going to meet? We're not meeting at the Renaissance?
Is that why Joe dressed up? I'm like, Joe, Genie, they're dressed up?